Thank you. We have a little bit of business to take care of at the outset of our meeting. So Councilwoman Hopkins, if you would.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion to ratify a public hearing on Monday, September 13th, 2021, at 7:00 in the municipal center regarding an additional appropriation regarding the landfill closure.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thanks. Motion passes. Okay, we have a couple of special presentations here this evening. I will be handling one and Councilwoman Nazo will be handling the other one. If I can say, before I begin, both of these gentlemen have served Plainville in incredibly difficult roles over many, many years. They are an inspiration to everybody. I admire both of these gentlemen. And I want to thank you both for your service to Plainville. You have certainly brought us through some difficult, troubling times over the many years that Dave has been here. In the past few years of Shane, we know what this has been like. So I do want to thank both of you very much personally. I do have a little bit of information about Shane Lockwood, who we'll be recognizing tonight. Shane is our Regional Health District person. Shane, the town, Shane became our Regional Health Director in 2012. The towns of Plainville and Southington established a Regional Health District in April of 2011. Chuck Moats, a resident of Plainville and Southington's Health Department Director, served as the temporary Regional Health Director through 2011. And as I said, Shane was named Health Director of the district beginning of 2012. Prior to his position in Plainville, Shane was the Assistant Health Director for the town of Waterbury. So a little bit of history about Shane. What I can personally say is I've had, I've learned so much from you, Shane. You have been wonderful. Every time I call, every time I needed information, you were there and helping out. And I can't tell you how much I value what you have given to the town. And I admire your, why you stuck with it. And I do wish you absolute best of luck. Shane will be moving to Florida. And I'm sure that will be a new adventure for you. So if you would come to the podium, I have a plaque for you that I'd like to give to you. I'm all masked up here, Shane.
Thank you so much.
Of course, of course. Just turned on. You do this so everybody can hear. Okay, so this is an appreciation and recognition award for Shane Lockwood. An appreciation and recognition of your dedicated service to the Plainville-Southington Regional Health District, dated at Plainville, Connecticut, this 13th day of September, 2021, by the Plainville Town Council. This is a small token to represent all of our thanks and many, many years of service to us. You did an amazing job. COVID really put the test to everybody, but you were the leader driving the ship. And we couldn't have done it without you. You helped not only, you know, the municipality, but you were right there for all our schools, which had very special things that they had to do as well. So I can't thank you enough. I wish you the very best of health and happiness in your future.
Thank you so much.
Keep in touch with us.
Thank you so much.
I just wanted to say thank you to this council, past council. Certainly, Robert has made a huge influence on my career. I consider him someone who's a mentor, who I could go to for advice and a friend. Also, there's a lot of first responders here tonight. And this town's really excelled with the first responders between the police fire. They've made my job very easy over the past 10 years. So thank you all very much for the recognition.
Best of luck. Okay, and our next honoree, this master ceremonies will be Councilman Nazo. And we'll be honoring Dave Laurie.
Thank you, Chairwoman Puglisi.
You're welcome.
1971, Dave Laurie's been serving the town of Plainville in his role of fire dispatch since 1971. So I did a little research. 1971, a house cost $28,300. Gallon of gas was 36 cents and milk was $1.18. What I couldn't find out is what a fire truck cost. I'm sure it's a little less than it does now. We all know how the world has changed in those 50 years. And we know how Plainville has changed in those 50 years. But one constant through all of it has been Dave Laurie. You've served the town of Plainville in many roles. And tonight, we recognize the 50 years you've spent dispatching through the town of Plainville. And for that, we're grateful. So in sincere appreciation of your service, dedication, and commitment to the citizens of the town of Plainville, we present to you this award, signed by all of us here on the council, and we are eternally grateful. If you'd like to meet me over here, I can present this to you. Congratulations, Dave. Thank you so much. Now, I have to say, I used to live across the street from Dave. And one of the happiest days of my life, of my girlfriend's life, was when I moved, because our bedroom was on the front of the house. And he has this spotlight that shines right in our bedroom. So don't take it personally. You are a great neighbor. It's just that spotlight helped accelerate my home per- and I moved all the way around the corner. I can't see. But thank you so much for everything you do for us and everything you have done for us. Please accept this on behalf of the Plainville Town Council. Maybe you'd like to share a couple of words with us, if you'd like?
I would, if I may.
Congratulations.
My time is, this will be short. Council Chair Puglisi, can I take this off the top?
Yep, absolutely.
May I take this off? I never, yeah, may I? Council Chair Puglisi, members of the town council, Town Manager Robert Lee, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for this 50-year recognition. To the best of my knowledge, I am the first Plainville dispatcher to be so honored. Part of the reason is Plainville hired the first alarm attendants for the fire department in 1954. That's because of the dial telephone system coming into existence. The telephone operators were now eliminated, and the town had to hire people to answer the phone. The role of dispatcher is extremely important. You are the first contact that residents have with obtaining emergency services. It's not a job to be taken lightly, and not everyone can do it. I first became a dispatcher in the summer of 1971. The exact date has been lost, but I've been around. I've also been, what I can tell you, I have been the Friday night dispatcher since October of 1979. That's almost 42 years. And as a sidebar, being a dispatcher, gone from the home at least one night a week, helps with the longevity of marriages. My wife Stella and I will be married 53 years next week, next month, next week! There've been a lot of changes in the last 50 years. When I started to dispatch a fire, you needed to hit the radio tone generator, operate the button on the radio microphone to give the location, open the apparatus doors, turn on the apparatus lights if necessary, and then run around the desk, out onto the apparatus floor, and write the address on the chalkboard. Because the whistle brought firefighters to the firehouse. Nobody had portable radios. They heard the whistle, they knew there was a fire, they had no idea where they were going. They had to come and read. Now, to dispatch a fire, you need to be computer literate. So the first thing you have to do is wake up the radio computer, hit the all-call button, transmit on their microphone to give the location of the fire, and then hit lights and doors to ready the apparatus floor. Next, wake up another computer. Start a new incident in I.M.I.A.R., I am Responding. You have to type in the address, the fire, the caller's name, phone number, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Then add a run sheet of the apparatus and officers to get their responding times, their arrival times, and everything else. And then you transmit all that data to their personal cell phone. Pretty good. So right now, I look at three computer monitors. And I've told many people, many times, add one more monitor and I'm out of here. So with that, again, thank you very much, and I'm out of here.
Okay, we'll return to our agenda this evening. We have two public hearings. First one is an additional appropriation regarding Valley Water Systems, Inc. land purchase. And the second is additional appropriation regarding landfill closure. Robert, if you could just give us a brief overview of each of them, please, and then I'll ask if there's any comment for the public hearing.
Yes, the town of Plainville, working with the town of Southington, is looking to have the town of Plainville purchase land owned by Valley Water System up next to Crescent Lake. The town of Southington wants to participate in order to prevent or to keep this piece of property in perpetual open space and protect their, you know, their water source at Crescent Lake. So we're looking, the price of the purchase is $300,000. Thereabouts. It could be a little bit more if we don't get a state grant, but only slightly more. And Southington and Plainville are going to split those costs evenly. And so we're looking this evening to appropriate $150,000, our share of the purchase price. It has been reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Commission, and they have issued an 8-24 referral. They said it's in the best interest of the town of Plainville to acquire this open space. The second appropriation is for the closing of our landfill. The town of Plainville is under orders through the DEP. At some point in time to close the landfill, we are required, over the years, to perform certain engineering responsibilities. To date, we've incurred about $95,000 above what we originally appropriated. And the town of Plainville has also received a proposal from LaRrow Engineering of Plainville to assist us in closing the landfill. And they have to do some, in order to head in that direction, the, some additional engineering work needs to be done in order to submit plans and specifications to the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection. So those are the two sources of what we're looking for this evening. I did provide the town council with some information regarding the unassigned fund balance. As of, we're estimating that, you know, as of the end of last fiscal year, which ended on June 30th, '21, our unassigned fund balance was a little bit, approximately $11,800,000, which represents 18.53% of our budget. Council has had a goal, a fund balance policy, hoping to keep the fund balance somewhere between, I think it's 12 and 14%. So we're significantly above what's necessary. If these appropriations were made this evening, coupled with what the town council did with regards to the budget this year, it would, we're estimating that the fund balance would come down to a little bit under $10 million and still represents 15.72% of the budget, which, of the, you know, of our revenue budget. So we're still significantly in good shape as far as our unassigned fund balance. This is a one-time expenditure against a couple of one-time revenues, which is the unassigned fund balance.
Okay, thank you for that information. At this point, I will open up the first public hearing regarding the additional appropriation regarding Valley Water Systems, Inc. land purchase. Does anybody wish to speak at the first public hearing? I'm going to ask three times. Does anybody wish to speak at the first public hearing? If I ask time, anybody wish to speak at the public hearing? Okay, I will close that. And on to the second portion. Is an additional appropriation regarding a landfill closure. Does anybody wish to speak at that public hearing? Does anybody wish to speak at the public hearing? One last time, does anybody wish to speak at that portion of the public hearing? Hearing none, I will close that. And we'll move on. Thank you. Next is the approval of the minutes of a previous meeting. May I have a motion to approve, please?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion to approve the minutes of August 16th, 2021, special and regular meeting; August 25th, 26th, 31st, 2021, special meetings; and September 2nd, 2021, special meeting.
Madam Chair, second that motion.
Thank you. I have a motion in a second. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Announcements or reports? Does anybody have any announcements or reports to make this evening?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Rosemary. It's your turn.
Yeah, my turn. Yeah, last week, I did attend the September meetings of Conservation Commission and Committee on Aging. Two quick points from Conservation Commission. Aquatic River Fall Cleanup, it will be Saturday, September 25th, 9 to noon. And I'm sure there'll be more publicity on it. And during the Earth Day festivities, they planted a pollinator garden at newer school. I think I mentioned it at one of our meetings. And it was reported last week that it's thriving. Monarch butterfly has been spotted, as well as several monarch caterpillars in the pollinator garden. So that was great. Committee on Aging at Senior Center, in fact, that was on Thursday. That same day, they were holding their 13th Annual Grandparents or grandchildren Conference. And was going well. Shaun also reported on one of their newer programs, the Memory Cafe, for persons who have some degree of memory loss and their family members. It's a very welcoming group. There's a lot of fun activities, and it's going well. Lots of programs on the schedule. There has been, you know, some effect from Delta on their onsite numbers. But it'll be interesting to see, you know, that changes in the near future. Social Services continues to be very busy. And one group that participation keeps increasing on is the Current Events Group, though, which is interesting. Now, tomorrow night, I'll be going to the Board of Library Trustees. And I did want to mention that the event to dedicate the Children and Youth Services Room for Betty Bocas was supposed to be this Friday. It's been delayed, and a new date will be chosen because some of the work is being done for the plaque.
Oh, okay.
So I did want to, you know, make-
So you'll give us a new date?
Yes, as soon as I know. I'll let you know. And Robert, of course, will know as well.
Perfect.
That's it? That's it? Thanks.
That's a lot. Does anybody else have anything to report?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to thank Councilman Underwood, along with the Police, Fire, and VFW for the September 11th memorial service. I thought it was a wonderful event. You know, you always get emotional around something like that. But it was great to be there with the people we know and we love and see our community together. And I thought everyone did a wonderful job. And thank you very much, Dave, and to everyone else who took part in that. Chief Peterson for having your troops there, and obviously Chief Sheen in the VFW. So thank you. It was a wonderful event.
Great.
Thank you, Jesse. Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
I'd like to also thank the Board of Education for supplying us the course. And they also provided the music. Did a wonderful job. I asked for one person, a vocalist, and they gave us 12. So again, many thanks to the Board of Education.
Great. Anybody else? I just have one item that I'll report on. On August 17th, Robert Lee and I attended the Main Street Community Foundation Anniversary. I think it was their 25th, 25th, 25th anniversary. Actually, it occurred last year, but the COVID has moved it up to this year. Just a little bit of information about the Main Street Community Foundation and what they do. They're a public charity that manages endowments to enhance the quality of life in Plymouth, Burlington, Bristol, Plainville, Southington, and Wiltgood. They manage funds for a great number of different organizations and folks. And with that, they also provide funding to the regional towns. And Plainville, over the past 10 years, has received over, I believe it was $500,000 in aid. Some of this aid has gone to schools, charities, nonprofits, and scholarships. So it's a huge organization that does an awful lot of good. And we are fortunate to be recipients of their good luck and all the hard work they did. And I do want to thank Susan Sadecki. She's the president and CEO of the organization. She keeps everything moving forward. She is just an enormous amount of energy. She's a lot of fun to be with, and she does this outstanding job administering this very big job. So it was a very nice event. And it was nice to see all those folks from all the other towns, and we had a good time.
Yes, we did.
Okay. All right, that's my report. If there are no others from anybody else, we'll move along to the next portion of our meeting. Do we have any appointments or reappointments tonight to boards and commissions? None? Okay. The Board of Education, they are meeting this evening, so we won't be hearing from them. And reporting my town attorney, Attorney Mastriani, welcome.
Good evening.
Do you have anything for us? All right, Robert, report the town manager. That would be your, you're up with your long report.
Apologize to the language.
Yes, we'll be here for one moment.
We need a little bit less during the summertime. And, but the business of the town does not slow down for some reason. Still trying to figure that out, but still moves forward at a pretty crisp pace. But the first item I have is to continue our discussion about the marijuana legislation, just kind of to set the table. The town attorney has drafted language that would amend Chapter 285-9 of the Parks and Recreation Areas Ordinance, to make it unlawful to, quote, "to use, consume, dispense, sell, smoke, vape, or have in one's possessions tobacco or cannabis products," unquote. Along with the current prohibition against the use, consume, dispense, sell, drink, or have in one's possession beer, wine, liquors, or other alcoholic beverages, the suggested language would also prohibit the use and possession of cigarettes, vaping, and cannabis in town parks and open space areas. Once the town council decides on the proposed language to amend the ordinance, town staff will schedule a public hearing to get citizen input before a final vote is taken. There are two other issues to consider, and not necessarily at this evening's meeting, but just to, you know, we've had previous discussions with regards to marijuana legislation. The first is whether the town council wants to give some recommendations to the Planning and Zoning Commission on whether dispensaries or growing facilities should be allowed in Plainville. The P&amp;Z is scheduled to meet tomorrow evening to begin discussions about amending their regulations with respect to recreational marijuana, dispensaries, and growing facilities. The second is, the issue is whether the town council desires to enact an ordinance that would restrict marijuana use in public spaces, such as sidewalks or outside restaurant eating areas. So with that, I guess I'll just see if the council has any, at least, questions that they would like to make with regards to, at least, the first item, the language.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I have a question. So I noticed that the wording was talking about banning smoking, but with edibles, is there also wording in the ban regarding bringing edibles, cannabis edibles, into the park?
I think the, I think the, the language that talks about the use would cover that. But I'll leave it up to Mike. He's in his team that's done a little bit more.
Yes, I would say it includes consumption.
Okay.
So in any form.
Okay, all right. Awesome. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Go right ahead.
I was looking through the materials on the town of Vernon that we had, and I also read one or two newspaper articles about a meeting they had a few weeks ago back in August. And apparently, they ended up removing the term possession because it could be a possible conflict with the state law. Now, I know obviously where that comes from, because the word possession is used in the regulations that address the alcohol. But anyhow, it may be worth looking at that. I'm not an attorney. But it may be worth taking a look at that. And there are reasons why they ended up removing it, actually, before they passed the ordinances. So like I said, I'm not the authority on it, but I think it's worth taking a look at.
Well, that's a distinction that we're going to need some direction on, is whether you want to ban just consumption or consumption and possession. Right now, we ban consumption and possession of alcohol. That's what the current ordinance is right now. So we can do both. It's going to be up to you and how you feel about that particular issue. The difference is consumption and possession.
Okay, that's interesting.
And there's been some talk about how that would be policed as well. And the difficulties in policing now.
Are there any other questions regarding this before we move along? Well, thank you for that. Thanks, Rosemary.
And I know the Planning and Zoning Commission is meeting tomorrow evening. There'll be at least one other opportunity for the council to give some advice. I know we reviewed the areas where dispensaries and growing facilities could occur, you know, based on existing P&amp;Z regulations as they deal with, as they dealt with medical marijuana. So I'm not sure if there's any further discussion. I did talk to Garrett earlier today and Langley. There was some discussion at our last meeting about dispensaries being perhaps located at Blossom's Corner, where the two pharmacies are located. As it stands right now, under the statute, we don't believe that we could carve out that particular area, you know, based on separation distances, you know, and change the separation distance between that particular area and a particular area further east, you know, on Gritten Avenue. So we don't anticipate that there will be, you know, I guess it's really only one possibility. And then it's questionable about whether, you know, that pharmacy would want to be located next to a dispensary to begin with. But technically, it would be allowed under our regulations if the P&amp;Z ended up adopting the same requirements as they did for medical marijuana.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Rosemary.
You know, I would have to say that that does concern me when you see an area that could be eligible that's really close to the Central Business District. It's pedestrian, kids walk by. I don't know if there's, you know, I realize we cannot designate or prohibit it by specific addresses, obviously. But I just wonder if there's some, you know, acceptable criteria, you know, generic criteria that would not allow them in an area, like I said, that's close to the Central Business District. That's an area that's pedestrian, kids walking by, families getting in and out of cars, going to other establishments in that area, you know. But I mean, I said that at the last meeting, and I do still have that concern.
Anybody else have any comment about that topic? Yep, it will continue on, right?
Okay, so based upon at least the initial discussion regarding the Parks and Recreation Areas Ordinance, would you like us to prepare a public hearing incorporating the language that was suggested by the town attorney?
Yes, yes.
Recognizing that that also includes cigarette use in the park. You know, that's something that's being recommended by Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, Youth Services, you know, and town staff to a degree as well.
Okay. Yep.
Next item I have is the Police Department update. Chief Peterson is here this evening to give a- Chief Peterson is here this evening to give an update on several items, including body cameras, recruitment efforts, reorganization, and other police department updates. I told Chief Peterson to keep it under, how many minutes does he have?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five, okay. Sorry about that.
Madam Chair, council members, good evening. Good to see you. All right. So the body cameras are ready to go. We have them up, up and running. All the cruisers are outfitted, and then the body cameras are synced with the cruisers. We should be ready to go live October 1. We're currently training the trainers. We have five in-house trainers that will then train the rest of the department. So I'm hoping October 1st, they'll, will go live. I believe we're going to do it as soon, so we're not training everybody at once. We're going to be training four, about four officers at a time. So once they're trained, then they'll go live, but we'll be fully operational by, hopefully, the beginning of October. We just submitted for a 30% reimbursement for the grant. We couldn't submit until we paid and showed proof of payment. So that looks pretty good. We'll get a 30%, 30% reimbursement. Lieutenant Mullins in charge of patrol. That's, that's what I was doing before I became the chief. So he stepped up and he's seen the day-to-day operations of the department as far as patrol goes, the scheduling and dispatch. He's also, has a few tasks that he's helping me with. And Detective Sergeant Roper's overseeing the detective division. Everything's going smooth on, on both ends. The layout of the department, I'm going to bring forward to you in a meeting or two from now because I have a couple of different ideas. I'm going to work with town manager to lay it out where I'd like to see our department go over the next year, the five years with, with manpower and where we're at with officers. Currently, we're looking to hire two more that will get us up to full staff. I just gave the town manager a background investigation for a lateral transfer. So we're hoping that that goes smooth, and we can hire that person. It'll be a tremendous savings, and we'll get that person on the road sooner. And then we, we're doing a second round of interviews with six individuals, and we'll look to do three backgrounds for an entry-level position. Currently, we just received a $35,000 grant. We have to use it by the end of December for anything COVID-related where there's an increase in crime. So we're able to utilize that. We're going to try to use as much money as that can, as we can with that. We won't be able to use it all, but what we're doing is four-hour overtime blocks we're implementing where we can put officers out on patrol. Tonight, we had, we have two extra officers out on a four-hour block patrol through a lot of the shopping centers where we've had increase in shoplifting, different neighborhoods where we've had increases in vehicles being broken into and catalytic converters. This will also be a big help come on Thanksgiving and Christmas time where we can use, utilize that money to provide extra patrols around Christmas time. So everything else, that's about it. I have a couple of other policies that I'm looking to put in place over the next two weeks. One will be updated on use of force. We have to update that one. It's ready to go. Another one, we, we have a town-wide policy on social media, but I have one that's a little more geared toward, towards police officers in the police department. That's ready to go. That'll be ready by the end of this week. And then the, the last one is a policy on EAP that I'll have out. And other than that, everything else is going pretty smoothly. Does anybody have any questions for me? Thank you.
I think you got 27 more minutes.
Can I just ask a quick question, Chief? Could you talk to me a little bit about the social media policy? What is it specific to police officers and what the expectations are? Or can you just tell me a little bit about that?
So it addresses more as far as, you know, we're out there involved with the public day-to-day. More so addresses where an officer cannot post something on social media that has to do with the work we do, whether it's you pulled over, someone gave him a ticket for going 60, 70 miles an hour, or, you know, if you took a, we're not supposed to. The, anything that is work-related can't, cannot go on your personal Facebook page or any other type of page, or Instagram, anything like that. So it'll cover us on that end of it where, where the town-wide policy doesn't address that. And also, it'll, it'll touch, I believe, on different things where, you know, you can't, you can't make a comment. You know, if you see something on social media, you can't make a comment, you know, representing the Plainville Police Department because it could be controversial where we don't want that officer making a comment, and we don't know that that's the true direction or the, the thought or the idea of the organization. It's kind of separates the two.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. The next item I have is the American Rescue Plan Fund Discussion. The town of Plainville is scheduled to receive approximately $5.2 million under the American Rescue Plan Act, which is ARPA, which was passed by the U.S. Congress. To date, 2.6 million has been received, with the remainder expected in June of '22. These funds must be obligated by December 31st, 2024, which is three years from now, and spent by December 31st, 2026, which is an additional two years. Eligible uses of ARPA funds include to support public health response to COVID-19, address negative economic impacts from the pandemic, investments in water and sewer projects, broadband infrastructure, and replace loss of revenue. Many municipalities are forming planning groups to engage in dialogue around needs, resources, and setting of priorities. I recommend that the town council consider formation of such a committee in Plainville. Such a committee could include town council members, perhaps two to three, the town manager, an assistant town manager, public work staff, the town attorney, town engineer, and regional health director. Maybe the new regional health director. Consideration could also be given to people involved with local nonprofits, the Business Community Economic Development Agency, and the Recreation and Parks Advisory Committee. I'm not sure how you want to proceed with this. Perhaps we can, you know, discuss this between now and the next meeting. And I think it would be good to put something together to begin to get into this complicated area of, of, you know, the requirements under the Treasury, you know, the Treasury Department, you know, the state. The U.S. Treasury is going to oversee these funds. We already have half of them in hand, but, you know, there's a lot of different things you can do with them. And I would think with having a broad spectrum of people within the community would be the best way to handle it. There is some guidance that's being given by the Connecticut Council of Municipalities that they can be, provide a resource and give you some direction of what other communities are doing. I have a pretty good sense of where I think the council should be spending some dollars, but I, again, I would like it to be more, more comprehensive in terms of the review.
I'd like to join on that committee. I don't know if anybody else wants to be. I remember you can let Robert know.
I wouldn't mind joining. There'll be, there'll be a lot of meetings, so.
I mean, we can talk if one of you two wanted to be, I'd find, but I would certainly volunteer for that.
Okay. All right. So I'll put a list together, run it past the council, and if you want to add any other groups or individuals, you know, just let me know. All right. Good. Thank you. Next item I have is a sewer user fee discussion. Under the town charter, the town council also serves as the Water Pollution Control Agency for Plainville. As such, the town council sets the sewer user rate each October for bills that will be due on November 1st. Town staff will be presenting a recommendation to the town council in the next several weeks, and also scheduling a public hearing at the next meeting. The sewer user rate has increased by 2% in each of the last two years, which is significantly lower than what was expected when the phosphorus removal project was initially developed. I hope that, you know, that trend continues as we, as I work with the finance director to come up with a recommendation. Wasn't able to get to it before this evening's meeting, but I probably will have it available within the next week or so. Give you an idea of what, what we will be recommending. Unfortunately, with the bills that have to go out on November 1st, we would look to have the public hearing and set the user rate on the same evening. Generally, at least over the last bunch of years, it's been pretty much a non-controversial, you know, discussion. I don't expect it to be controversial to any degree, you know, this year as well. So I don't think it's necessary to hold a special meeting, but, you know, we'd like to do a one-and-done if that's possible. Okay. Next item I have is the White Oak redevelopment discussion. Town staff continues to negotiate the term sheet with Manafort Newport. The traffic study has been completed, and a work session with the town council is being scheduled for the second meeting in October. Now that Manafort Newport has indicated they want the town to manage the DECD remediation grant, town staff is recommending engaging the Connecticut Brownfield Land Bank Inc. to administer same. The land bank has been involved in brownfield remediation grants throughout Connecticut for many years. They are very familiar with the requirements of the grant and all that is involved with working with the developer to clean up contaminated properties. Their goal is to efficiently administer the grant and to coordinate relevant activities among the town, the developer, the LEP, DEEP, and DECD. The land bank will also negotiate the terms and conditions of the tri-party agreement among the town, preferred developer, and the land bank. The recommendation has been discussed with the DECD staff, and they have agreed that the services provided by Connecticut Brownfield Land Bank Inc. would be grant-eligible. This recommendation to engage the land bank has also been reviewed by both Attorney Mike Mastriani and Attorney Bill Rock from Shipman and Goodwin, who will be engaged to help us in this project. And they both feel having them on board would be beneficial to Plainville. The land bank has worked previously with Mark Lovely on Brownfield Cleanup Project in Southington. Manafort Newport would be comfortable as well with having the land bank administer the grant and associated requirements and paperwork. There is an item under new business to enter into the tri-party agreement with the Connecticut Brownfield Land Bank Inc. for administration of the White Oak Redevelopment Project Brownfield Municipal Grant. That's a lot to get out, subject to review by the town attorney. I think we gave you a copy of some of the information we received from DECD on the, on the grant as well. So I don't know if you have any questions. If Mike, I don't know if you want to add anything to this, this portion of the discussion?
I would only say, I would only say I would strongly urge the council to consider hiring the land bank. This is what they do. This is right in their wheelhouse. They're very familiar with DECD as well as the Brownfield Remediation Grant Program. And plus, as Robert said, they work with this particular developer. I believe in Berlin as well, correct?
Yes.
So they're very familiar with each other, and I think it would be really helpful for the town to do that.
Okay. Thanks.
If there's no questions or comments, the next item I have is the landfill closure discussion. Last month, the town council met with representatives from LaRrow regarding a proposal to close the landfill located on Greater Lane. The town is currently renewing a stewardship permit with the state DEEP, and one of the requirements is the eventual closure of the landfill. LaRrow's proposal includes a chemical and geotechnical assessment of the existing landfill, the preparation of a landfill closure plan, the preparation of a pre-construction permits, the management of the landfill closure activities, and to perform post-closure management activities. LaRrow would also be responsible for the preparation and submission of the various reports and applications required by DEEP. LaRrow is proposing to perform the geotechnical assessment for a cost of $45,000, and then develop the landfill closure plan and submission of all pre-construction permit applications for a cost of $50,000. That's, that's a portion of the additional appropriation that's being considered later on in the meeting. As proposed during the implementation of the landfill closure, revenue will be generated throughout placement fees paid by those delivering soil within the landfill. These fees will be utilized in two ways. One, to fund the sourcing, placing, and management operation necessary to achieve the closure. And two, to pay a host fee to the town. LaRrow is proposing two options with respect to the host fee. Option one, the town would receive a host fee of $2.50 per ton of soil placed at the landfill. Under option one, expected revenue would be $435,000. I asked LaRrow if they would provide perhaps another option, which could be, you know, perhaps generate some more revenue. And they proposed an option two. And the town would receive a host fee based on the contract value of the soil placed at the landfill. The following schedule of fees are as follows. Placement of a contract value less than $15 a ton, the town would receive $2 a ton. They propose a solid $2.50, but if it's at 15 or less, it would be $2. Between $15.01 and $17.49 for the placement contract value, the town would receive $2.25 for host fee. The sweet spot, I guess, is between $17.50 and $22.50 because that would be, the town would receive $2.57 per ton. Anything from $22.51 to $24.99, the town would receive $2.75 per ton. And anything over $25 a ton, the town would receive $3 a host, $3 a ton host fee. So it's, you know, uncertain what, you know, what the placement fee would be for, for bringing in soil. It ranges, it ranges right now. Under option two, LaRrow is estimating the potential fees paid for the town to the town would be in the range from $348,000 to $522,000. That's compared to, you know, the, the original estimate of $435,000. Could be a little bit less, could be a little bit more. Finally, the town would receive 50% of any unused portion of the project contingency presented during the August 25th work session with the town council. The project contingency amount has a value of $193,350 that I could supplement if it wasn't necessary to use those contingency funds, which, you know, again, it's a contingency, so it's unknown where they're going to run it to. Other items that would require the use of the contingency fund. There is an item under new business that would authorize the town manager to execute an agreement with LaRrow relative to their proposal dated September 9th, 2021. And a decision, you know, you know, with regards to the key option does not need to be decided at this time. So really, the key is, is whether you want to move forward with engaging LaRrow in this project. You know, they're looking, and we are looking as town staff to ramp this process up as soon as possible and take advantage of, of, you know, those particular entities that are looking to get rid of this soil and have it placed at our landfill at a fee. And that eventually, there would be a cap which would be put on top of, of this so that, you know, it would prevent, you know, any type of, any, any type of degradation from the existing items that are in the landfill. And that's one of the reasons why the, you know, the DEEP is looking for the town to close this landfill at some point in time. So this allows us to move forward on really a longstanding goal. And it, you know, under current economic conditions, it appears that we can do this not only at no cost to the town, but perhaps, you know, receiving some additional revenue as well. I know there's some representatives from LaRrow here this evening. Not expected to speak, but they're certainly available. If anybody has any questions that either myself or Mike cannot answer at this point.
Any questions so far? They're all good? Okay. All right.
All right. Next one's kind of a new one. It's a little long-winded, but I'll, I'll try to get through it. It's Certex Connect Broadband Interest Survey. Certex Broadband Solutions is currently installing fiber to connect town offices, wastewater treatment facilities, emergency services, and the educational school buildings. This fiber network, when completed, will be owned by the town. Plainville's network will connect all four corners of the town with the town center and includes 12 and a half miles of aerial cabling and three underground spans running under the major highways. This work is expected to be completed by the end of this year. The new municipal network is being constructed with state-of-the-art technology with the capacity to build fiber to the home connections that will provide high-speed, affordable, and reliable internet access throughout the entire Plainville community. Private fiber networks currently being deployed by Frontier and GoNetSpeed, which is a startup ISP, will only be in select areas of Plainville. Not all neighborhoods will be serviced. Additionally, the town would have no control over the private network, the services offered, the quality or the pricing. Certex is suggesting that the town consider building its own municipally-owned network. A municipally-owned network would be efficient, or should be efficient, to build out and have many benefits for the community. Some of those benefits include lower cost and more bandwidth, high-quality reliable internet service. Everyone will have affordable access regardless of internet service, everyone will have affordable access regardless of socioeconomic status, geographic location, or other limiting factors. The town would control pricing and operational concerns. It would enhance the quality of life, and it would increase property values. They reference a study which says that the fiber internet can add an average of 3.1% to a home's value. It also shows that private properties with 1 gigabit connections sell for an average of 7% more than those with 25 megabits or lower. They also point out that renters are willing to pay more for apartments with fiber connections. They also feel that having a municipally-owned network would support economic development and new revenue opportunities. Certex has provided an initial deployment, cost analysis for capital expenditures and operations and maintenance, subscription fees for the 1G symmetrical service including internet phone, O and M, and a capital recovery charge are envisioned to be less than $90 a month, a dramatic decrease for households over the current private services that are approximately double that amount. The network would pay for itself with a 35% subscription take rate. It is important to note that the deployment cost analysis does not include any grant funding which could substantially offset the cost to the town. Certex is working with town staff to develop a broadband internet survey. This would allow, this would be an online tool for Plainville residents and businesses to express their interest in subscribing to a municipal fiber network. The survey link will reside on the town website. Residents and business owners will be driven to the survey through social media, direct communications from the town to residents, direct communications from school system to families, and to grassroots communications effort. Town staff will create informational materials that will educate residents on the many benefits of a municipally-owned broadband network for Plainville. The survey will be conducted over a six-to-12-month period. At that point, we should know confidently if we can achieve the needed 35% take rate, which is what their minimum percentages to make what they feel the numbers, what would make the numbers work. The survey is expected to begin in October. No action is required by the town council. It's just a survey that would ask people in Plainville, would you prefer if the town ran a municipal fiber network rather than be at the mercy, some would say, of Comcast, Frontier, or GoNetSpeed, and perhaps any others? If the survey means that people in town are not interested in such a thing, that would be reported back to the council. We'll move forward if it's something that there appears to be a lot of interest. The town council could decide to have a public information session and go through, you know, a lot more detail as far as what that would mean. It would mean an investment by the town, but an investment that would pay for itself over a period of time if enough people, you know, were part of joining up. So, you know, we'll start to, you know, we'll start to see more on social media encouraging people to take the survey, and if the council likes, we could bring in Certex, and they could have a little bit more discussion with a municipally-owned system, you know, how that would operate, you know, and perhaps answer a lot of questions that I, I'm not really prepared to answer this evening. We could prepare for that work session to happen either sometime in October or even, you know, in November. So I'm not sure if you want to do that at this time, but I think it would be helpful to know it, you know, to be familiar with it, at least as it goes forward over the next six months to a year.
I think we should set something up.
Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
Would it be possible for the council to see a copy or draft of the survey before it actually is available online to the public? Just so we know, you know, what it's going to look like and kind of have a heads-up on it?
The survey's actually up online right now. We, you know, we're driving people, we can give you the link to it.
Send the link to it, yeah. I think it'd be interesting if we could see that in advance, yeah, and helpful.
Let me make it up. Okay. The next item, if there's nothing else, the next item I have is...
Anybody else have any comments about it?
No.
No? Okay. Thank you.
Next item I have is the October town council meetings. Looking ahead, I will not be available for the October 4th town council meeting. That may make some people happy, but I'm suggesting the town council has traditionally canceled the meeting the evening before Election Day, which would be November 1st. Based on these two factors, I'm suggesting that the October meetings be held on the 12th and the 25th rather than the 4th and the 18th. That would kind of spread the meetings out and also account for the fact that you most likely canceled the one on the 1st of November. Please note that the October 12th meeting will be held on Tuesday, as the Columbus Day holiday is on October 11th. If there are no objections, the town staff will make the necessary notifications.
Are you ready to get those dates?
Yes.
Yes? Okay.
All right. Next item I have is the COVID-19 update. As of last Thursday, Plainville remains in the red category with a rate of 100,000 persons with a rate of 23.2 positives per 100K persons. That's the way the State Health Department does it. They also, their statistics indicate that there are between 51 to 100 persons with COVID-19 in Plainville for the two-week period ending on September 4th. In a conference call that I had with Shane Lockwood and the other regional towns yesterday, those numbers are actually down slightly since September 4th. They haven't increased to any great degree, and Shane felt relatively comfortable that things may settle out and not get worse as we go forward. All municipal buildings continue to require the wearing of masks regardless of your vaccination status for the time being, at least until we get into an orange category, a lower category, as long as we're in the red category, I should say. With regards to the financial dashboard, it was included for the other folks, it was included in the meeting packages and posted last Friday afternoon on the town website. Plus, the town council wants me to go through it. It's the first two months where nothing really unanticipated. The one item I'd like to point out is our recycling fee revenue, actually expenditures. We had budgeted, I believe somewhere around $76 a ton that we would pay for recycling, and for the month of July, we only, the report only has July for recycling, that kind of lags a little bit. But we actually, that fee that was charged was $35.50, almost half of what we had budgeted. And that's a volatile number, that recycling fee. I understand that cardboard is of high demand right now, and recyclers are getting a pretty good return for that, so I think that's driving down some of the cost of the recycling, but just wanted to point out that in one area, we are, you know, it's not a big number, but certainly a positive direction early on in the season, at least for the fiscal year. So unless there's no questions with... Oh, one other item. I did add a couple of other projects to the capital projects. One is the Town Line Road project, and I know there's a second one.
The rescue plan funds?
Yeah, the opera funding, you know, we started to find that followed out as well. So those are the two there. We're going to track as far as the monthly reports are going forward. Thank you. Next item I have, and I'm going to turn it over to Matt Dasco, who will give an update on the progress of the Capital Projects Building Committee with the Middle School of Plainville renovation project. So I'd like to turn it over to him, and then he'll follow his report with some happenings.
Good evening. Give me one moment, I'll pull this up. Good evening, through you, Town Manager Lee, and Council Chairperson with Lee's seat. I wanted to provide a brief update on progress related to the Middle School of Plainville proposed renovation. We last discussed this before council, I believe it was late last year, early this year, and since that time, the Capital Projects Building Committee has been working to move forward. So the Middle School of Plainville project, originally, the Middle School of Plainville received its original occupancy April 8th of 1992. The 30-year mark for renovate as new eligibility comes in 2022, so early next year, mid, early next year. This is the final school renovation for the town of Plainville. Previously, the town has addressed renovations related to Linden, Plainville High School, Tofflon, Wheeler, and this proposed project, if it moves forward on this timeline, would seek to complete the Middle School of Plainville project by approximately 2025. The Middle School of Plainville project would have grant eligibility in 2022, and so the grant application deadline is where we have to work back from. So that application deadline is June 30th of 2022, which would target a May referendum to meet that timeline. And in order to meet these timelines, the Capital Projects Building Committee has recommended retaining an owner's project manager to oversee that project. So what is an owner's project manager? We're a little bit less familiar here in Plainville with that concept than in the state of Connecticut. Some states actually require this as part of their services. But an owner's project manager aids in the development of a project scope. It helps provide guidance on timelines and state grant eligibility, and it will also assist in developing all of the pre-referendum materials that we need to have. This includes completing the state grant application, architectural services that are needed to certify the quote-unquote renovate as new per state guidelines, and preparation of bid for architectural services in the actual design and construction phase, should it move forward. The town issued an RFQ, a request for qualifications for an owner's project manager, pre-referendum services, middle school of Plainville renovate as new. If that's not a mouthful, I'm not sure what isn't. The proposed submissions had three respondents, Colliers, Construction Solutions Group, and STB DPM. The Colliers bid was revised, so that's why you see a revised total to reflect an equal comparison across. Owner's project manager, the RFQ originally went out in May, in June of 2021, and the Capital Projects Building Committee interviewed all three respondents, and they made a recommendation in August of 2021 to proceed with Construction Solutions Group. The recommendation emerged from a number of factors. The Capital Projects Building Committee identified Construction Solutions Group as the most complete and comprehensive proposal. It included architectural services at the outset required for that certification as renovate as new. They had a tailored approach to the community, and they presented an ability to package and develop a referendum information to best position the town for a successful referendum. So what are the next steps? To proceed, an appropriation of funding of approximately $90,000 will be needed, and that's the bid that was received as well as other sundry expenses that we expect to incur. This funding excludes referendum costs, legal, bond counsel, explanatory text, those sorts of materials. We're seeking that the council in October, or we're contemplating with council support, that in October, there would be an authorization of an additional appropriation of $90,000, and this would engage CSG to actually perform the work. Representatives from CSG are here tonight, so if there are questions that I can't answer, they should be available, and I'm more than willing to answer any questions that bring us up to date. Really, the short summary of this is if the council wishes to proceed with the Middle School of Plainville renovation project, we have to work backwards from the state grant deadline, and so that's what we're proposing here is a method to reach those deadlines.
This is a recommendation being made by the Capital Projects Building Committee to use an owner's project representative, and in order to meet the June 30th submission date, we would have to begin to move forward now. The plan would be, if the council is of a mind, would be to set a public hearing. One of the October meetings, hopefully the first one, for the $90,000. The Capital Projects Building Committee would attend the meeting and give their, you know, formal recommendation, and we could further the timeline. The referendum would not have to be, it used to be that you had to have an approval in place before you submitted the application. The state is allowed that to drag out into the fall to a certain degree. So, you know, May is something we would target. Probably get pushed back to early June if necessary. It's always nice to have it before you submit it, but it could be done after that if necessary. The cost for the owner's project for this pre-referendum cost is not reimbursable through state grants. We've done this on, you know, previous projects where we've engaged an architect. You know? And, but the referendum cost would be reimbursable if we were successful in getting it passed, so that would be reimbursed to the grant, you know, as we went forward. So I think it's important to move forward with the timeline. I know that the Board of Education has not necessarily deferred, but has kind of, you know, pushed back some of the replacement costs because they felt that if they made it as part of the renovation project, that would be more beneficial to the town in the long run. The Capital Projects Building Committee, you know, went through the school last month and did a tour and got a bird's-eye view, a close-up view of, you know, the issues at the middle school. It has reached, you know, a point where, you know, something should be done, and they feel it's the most cost-effective way to move forward. I don't think this is a surprise to the town council that we're bringing this project forward. So, yeah, so that's what the recommendation is this evening.
So is there any estimate as to what this total cost is going to be for the project? Or is it too preliminary to get that?
I know that a couple of years ago, we were talking somewhere in the $40 million range. You know, our reimbursement rate right now is for eligible, you know, new cost was somewhere, at least today, it's 65%. You know, whether that's a valid number, and that is really hard to say. I think, you know, that would be developed as part of this process, and I think we would be able to get more definitive numbers, but at one point in time, you know, a couple of years ago, that was the number we were talking about. That was a range.
Okay.
So would it be okay if we brought, you know, appropriation at the next council meeting, at least to engage and start to move at least this process forward?
Yeah, okay. Is everybody okay going forward with that? Get it moving and see what they do?
Can I make one recommendation, though? One, is it possible for us to maybe do a quick half-hour work session with the Capital Building Project Committee so we can... Because I don't have any questions tonight, but I think spending a little time before we go into a public hearing to answer our question...
Yeah, we can do it before the next meeting.
For me, it would be more advantageous for me to talk to them first and then get some of these answers so we are more prepared for the public hearing.
Would you like to do that work session before the next council meeting? Would you like to set up a separate...
I'm fine moving forward and putting, you know, a public hearing on the next meeting, and if we can set a work session up that night, that's fine with me.
Half hour, you think, or are you...
Yeah, I just, I think we need to drill down as the council, the chair mentioned. There's some specific questions I think we need to know before we get to that public hearing.
Yeah, we can arrange that very easily.
Okay.
We'll do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? Okay. All right. Happenings now? Are you the happening guy?
I am. This evening, after a summer hiatus of limited events, I have a number to report. Elections, it's difficult or perhaps easy for council members to recognize November 2nd is the election day. Don't forget to vote. But we bring this up because absentee ballot applications are now available in the town clerk's office or on the town website at plainvillct.com. Online, there's directions for a direct link in a form, fillable form that can be submitted. You may drive off your application at our election drop box located outside the town hall, and that's going to be the side entrance, or directly in the town clerk's office. Absentee ballots will be issued on Friday, October 1st, and proceeding from there. If you have any additional questions, please contact the town clerk directly at 860-793-0221, and it's going to be extension 7151. Bulk waste curbside collection began today, September 3rd, and continues Mondays through November 1st. Eligible residents can schedule their once-annual bulk waste collection by calling the town hall or CW. hall or CWPM at 793-6721. Again, that's 860-793-6721. Residents are reminded that no bulk waste is to be placed at the curb more than 24 hours prior to the scheduled collection. We actually had some folks in August starting to put it in the curb, so 24 hours, please, and there's further detail on the town website. Sewer billing, as mentioned, will be going out the end of October for November 1, due date, 30 days to pay. Past due sewer balances will be receiving delinquent notices, will be lean, and demand notices will be going out shortly as well for those. So that would be last year's sewer bill. The Senior Center has a number of exciting programs coming up. I'll highlight a few. Pizza Wednesdays, reservations are required, but the Senior Center is offering pizza every Wednesday. Cost is $2.50, includes bottled water, and is Wednesdays at noon. An exciting opportunity, and this comes from some of the limited food service offerings that they've been able to offer due to COVID. Connecticut Women and the Right to Vote, featuring a Plainville connection to these historic events. I think Council Chair, Councilwoman Moranti can comment on this a little bit more. This will be sponsored by the Historical Society and presented by Council member and Senior Center member Rosemary Moranti. Programs based on the Plainville Historical Society's Summer 2020 Virtual Exhibit, pardon me, celebrating the Centennial of the 19th Amendment. Learn about the long courageous struggle for Connecticut women and the right to vote. Also discover the interesting role of Plainville and women in this story. To register to vote or to find out more, please contact the Senior Center, or it's available online as well. The Memory Cafe that was mentioned earlier continues to be successful. The next one will be Thursday, September 16th at 2:30. And then some other events that are exciting to be noting is cards, games, and billiard tournaments are back and open. There's an extensive listing, including Mahjong on Mondays, setback tournaments, cribbage, panache, bridge, bingo, chariot main, Mexican train, a pool tournament, and then a repeat of those events going forward. So further information is available on the town website or by contacting the Senior Center. And the final one is a note for the community, which is the fire department training. The fire department will be training with acquired structures and houses in the coming months. Specifically, the fire department has acquired the structure next to J. Timmies on New Britain Avenue. The property owner has allowed them to complete training on September 14th and 15th from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. So residents are made aware that they may see real-world skills being practiced there, such as roof ventilation, smoke or fog machines, blowing water, and fire apparatus in the area. So they're just advised on that. It's a great opportunity for the department to give real-world skills and train their volunteers, and we're very grateful for that. And with that, I'm more than willing to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you for your report. Does anybody have any questions for either Matt or Robert with their lengthy but informative reports for us today? You're all good? A lot of information there, we appreciate that, and all that you do to put it together. I was talking to you about that.
Thank you very much. You're welcome.
All right. If there are no further questions, we'll move into our public comment section of the meeting during this time. We welcome the public to come to our podium. Please state your name and address. You'll be given three minutes to speak to the council. Does anybody wish to speak to the council this evening? Does anybody wish to speak to the council tonight? Okay, last chance. Anybody wish to speak to the council? All right, thank you. Close the public comment section. We do not have any old business, so we'll move into approval of our new business items. May I have a motion for item number one?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion to appropriate $150,000 from general fund unassigned fund balance account O100032110-000 to transfer out land acquisition fund account O1084055535-0000 for the purchase of 48.8 plus acres of valley water systems named property located on Ledge Road at MAP 45 Block A, Lot 17 for open space purposes.
Madam Chair, second that motion.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? If a few motion passes, I have number two.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion to appropriate $200,000 from general fund unassigned fund balance account O100032110-0000 to transfer out landfill account O1084055524-0000 for the landfill closure.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, thank you. Number three.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion for the Town Council acting as the Water Pollution Control Authority to establish a public hearing for Tuesday, October 12th, 2021, at 7:00 p.m. in the Municipal Center to hear public comment regarding the sewer user rate for period November 1st, 2021 to October 31st, 2022.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, number four, please.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion to approve and authorize the town manager to enter into a tri-party agreement with the Connecticut Land Bank for administration of the White of Redevelopment Project Brownfield Municipal Grant contingent upon review of the town attorney.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item number five.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion to approve and authorize the town manager to enter into an agreement with LaRrora Engineering regarding the landfill closure contingent upon review with the town attorney.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion to approve the tax refunds as listed on the addendum.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Can I just ask one thing before we, regarding the middle school, do we need to set that public hearing for October 12th as well? Or should we?
Yeah, no, I think you could add it this evening and set the public hearing, otherwise we'd ratify it at the meeting. I think it's cleaner if you do it ahead of time.
Either way, do you want to add it?
Well, why don't we finish this, and then I'll add it, you know, go on this item, and then we can add it.
Okay. Okay. All in favor of the tax refunds?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion to...
Add, you want to add to the agenda? Public hearing?
Thank you. Motion to add to the agenda, public hearing regarding the renovation of the Middle School of Plainville.
Second.
For, we're going to have it.
Ninety thousand.
For October 12th, 2020.
Yes, 7:00 p.m.
7:00 p.m. Thank you.
7:00 p.m., October 12th. Okay, I, do I have a second here?
Second.
Any discussion? Bumbling through this, right? Bumble.
Sorry about that.
No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, thank you. Do we have any other discussion items for this evening, Mr. Lee?
Just one item. Several months ago, I was contacted by some people who live in the Honor Heights area of Plainville. You know, Honor Heights area of Plainville is up near Proventure, north of Northwest Drive, to the east of Route 177. It's a neighborhood that has about 85 houses, and they don't have sewers there, and it was, some residents spoke to me about, you know, would the town consider extending sewer services in that area. I met with some of the residents who were, you know, early on, who were organizers apparently of the area, of the group. I said I'd be willing to meet, you know, have a meeting with, you know, invite all of the residents to attend the meeting to, you know, have a discussion about that. Certainly no decisions or recommendations have been made. I think there may be some advantages to perhaps considering it at this time. Back in the late 80s, early 90s, I know that there was an initiative to have sewers installed in that area, and I believe it went to referendum and did not pass, where, you know, 30 years later, and, you know, there may be some advantages to it, but, for example, one example would be, you know, we're repaving roads right now. One of the big costs of sewer installation is you got to repave the roads after you put it in the ground, so if we're already paving the roads, that kind of eliminates the cost, you know, lowers the cost of installing sewers because we've already, you know, planned for repaving roads. There may be some Harper monies, American Rescue Plan, monies that the council may, you know, throw in that direction as well, if that's, you know, if the committee gets together. So there's, you know, and there'd be some beneficial assessment revenue that would come from the people themselves. Their home values go up because sewers are available, and I think the residents need to understand that if they're going to support it. They did an informal survey with their neighborhood, you know, and at least a little bit more than 50% of the people that they surveyed, and granted, they went door-to-door and gave the information to me, I guess we'll find out later how accurate that may be. People said they were either interested or somewhat interested in hearing more, so more than 50% expressed interest in at least learning more and having some discussion. I have a meeting set up here in the Town Council chambers this Thursday at 6:00 p.m. We've invited all the people who live in that area. We actually handed them, you know, provided flyers to be handed out to people, to inviting them to come. We even put a couple of lawn signs up just reminding people that it's this Thursday. So, you know, just, I have meetings occasionally with neighborhoods about various subjects, and just want to let the council members know that, you know, I'm not sure where it's going to lead, but we're going to have a meeting, and I know that some people are happy about it, some people are not happy about it, so I guess it'll be another one of those meetings and put, you know, I enjoy them, and I think that it could be a learning experience for all. I know I did let Councilman Underwood know about it, since he used to live in that area, and I know that I picked his brain a little bit about some of the history and some of the situations up there as well, and I know that he indicated that he plans on attending that meeting on Thursday. You're invited, you know, it's not required, but you certainly, if you have nothing to do on Thursday, you know, come by at 6:00.
So, Robert, just, if this starts to take on a reality, what percentage of those neighbors need to be affirmative that they want that to happen? So, for example, if you're at 50%, 50%, yes, 50%, no, what's the take from that?
The take is a Town Council decision. There's no requirement that we, that people be in favor of it in order to install sewers.
So people, if we, the council decided to do that, they would be compelled to hook up if we put the sewer in, or could they still say, I don't want it in my, you know, but skip me over and go to the net? How does that work?
Well, we're not, from the town staff point of view, we're not, we're not, we would not recommend the extension of the sewers because we need more revenue from people to connect. So my recommendation would be if the council did go forward with it, I would exempt people who didn't want to connect. Although, I think the council should assess a beneficial assessment because their property values are going up as a result of having sewers available, whether you connect or not. And some, you know, I would, you know, we would have to bring in an appraiser to determine what that might, that increase might be, but from my experience, you know, the increase is probably in the $10,000 range, if not more than that, at the very minimum. You know, if your septic system goes south in that area, it's going to cost you $25,000 to $35,000 to replace your septic system. So, you know, do you take out a $10,000 insurance policy, so to speak, you know, to have that available? Plus, you know, again, if somebody's going to buy your property, and if anybody's trying to sell property that has a septic system, there's a whole process that you go through now where they go through your septic system, they find one little thing wrong, you know, it holds up the sale, just you may be able to talk about that a little bit, and what, you know, costs people go through trying to sell their house that has a septic system, and they're surprised by it. So there are a lot of advantages to having sewers available, you know, but I would not recommend, of course, it's a council decision, but we're not looking at it to get user fee revenue, we're looking at it to maybe take care of, you know, to actually benefit the neighborhood in the long run, and perhaps, you know, solve some pollution problems. People have been putting up, doing some major repairs to their septic systems in our area in the hopes that the town may be willing to, you know, extend sewers. So I guess we'll find out more on Thursday.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Anything else? Is that it, Robert, for you?
Yes.
Okay, so at this point, may I have a motion to go into executive session, please?
Madam Chair, go ahead. Motion to move into executive session for union negotiations.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. We won't be taking any action outside of that.